Morning, everybody. It is Wednesday, November 25th, 2020. And this is the Board of County Commissioners' work session. This briefing is on Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan update. And if you'd like to join in, the phone number is 360-252-9020, and the PIN number is 1234. And we have one hour for this update. And we have, I'm John Hutchings, the Chair of the Board. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Ty Mensah. We have County Manager Reno Chavez, and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, and we have Stephen Bramwell joining us. We also have Allison Osterberg from the Thurston Regional Planning Council, and Jenica Machado, our Community Development Manager. Am I missing anyone?
I don't see Stephen Bramwell.
Oh, not Stephen Bramwell. Good grief.
Chris Hawkins?
That's it. Thank you, that's him. Thank you so much. Apologize for that. And I'm looking to see, and I don't see Commissioner Edwards on the line yet.
I don't see that. So I will let you know when he joins.
All right, thank you. So who's going to lead this off? And are you?
I believe Chris is going to take the lead, or Allison.
Yes, I'll start things off. Yeah. Chris Hawkins here from Thurston County Public Health and Social Services.
And I'm sorry, Chris, I'm sorry for calling you Stephen Bramwell. I apologize, thank you.
I understand that we are easily confused from our Zoom images. So that's understandable.
Thank you.
But thank you very much. So I'm your Education and Prevention Team Manager with the Health Department. And I've been the county's lead staff to this climate mitigation plan project over the last couple of years. And I'm happy to bring you this update this morning. Commissioner Edwards is the representative of the County Commission, the lead representative for the Steering Committee on this project. So I think he's pretty well informed of what I'm about to present to you. I am joined by Allison Osterberg, who's been the lead staff at Thurston Regional Planning Council for this project. So we're going to go through a presentation that hopefully will take no more than half the time that we have today, because I want to leave some time for your questions and any discussion that you would like to have. We're going to walk through this climate mitigation plan project. And if I can share my screen, I'll put up the slides that we have prepared for you today. And it looks like I can do that.
I think I didn't recognize you, because you're not wearing a bicycle helmet. That might be it. And we have a copy of the PowerPoint.
Good. Now, let's see if I can navigate. Does this show you the slides yet?
I can see the slides.
Okay.
And it looks like when you do that, it's going into the presenter mode. So you can see kind of the two side by side.
Can you see your notes?
So we should be on the title slide, I hope that's the case. And so I just wanted to go through a little bit of an introduction and overview here of this climate mitigation plan. This has been in the works for a few years now. Really, the effort derives from the work that our county has engaged with multiple partners about. And was something that the Health Department was aware of well before the start of this planning effort. We identified climate change as a key issue in our community's long-run health. The Thurston Thrives effort, which was formed to work on community health improvement across public and private and a variety of partners, also identified this as a key area to work on. And in fact, developed, as you can see on this slide, a strategy map that...
Chris, can you hit the slide function? So your notes go away. That'll make the public who's watching say you'll be able to read the PowerPoint much easier.
I can try. Let's see if I can make that happen.
That wasn't it, but you're starting.
Apologies for the technical...
That's fine, we still have sufficient time.
Hopefully...
Because the viewers at home are on YouTube, it'll be easier for them to read and see it.
Let's try this again.
And if it doesn't work, at least you tried.
That says slideshow, let's see if that works any better.
It's not sharing just yet.
Nothing coming up yet?
Nothing, no.
Okay. All right, why is that not working?
There, now it's starting.
It looked great on my screen.
I'm sure it does.
Is it, is anything popping in yet?
Yeah, it's showing the slideshow with your sides.
Still with the notes?
The deck, the deck on the left side.
Okay. Let's try activating the slideshow. Is that any better?
Well, you're back to where you were, so just continue on from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Maybe I can just minimize this window.
Yeah, I mean, you may be able to check it in the display settings, but you can also... You want to swap presenter view and slideshow? There we go.
There, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I'm done.
I had it for a second there.
Yeah, you're doing nothing out.
Darn, it's the lag, maybe. Trying one more time.
I think it is the lag, you're right.
So I had it, I just need to go back in time about 15 seconds. Okay, so, well, hopefully it's showing up. I'm hoping you're looking at the overview slide.
Yep.
We wanted to make sure that you knew that this is a long-range effort that the Health Department started a while ago. Thurston Thrives has also worked on it. In around the year 2019, which was after this Thurston Thrive strategy map was completed, the Board of County Commissioners identified that they wanted to partner with the local cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater to work on this effort together. Because this issue spans across jurisdictional boundaries and the whole of Thurston County. And in Phase 1 of that arrangement with the other cities, the county identified the science-based targets that would be the focus of this climate mitigation effort. And those are shown here. A 45% reduction of the 2015 levels of greenhouse gas emissions by the year 2030, and 85% reduction from those same levels by the year 2050. And that gave rise to a second phase, which is now what we are coming to a conclusion of, to put together this plan that would help us to achieve those targets.
Chris, before you move on, Commissioner Edwards, I believe, just joined the conversation.
All right, thank you.
Great. So I wanted to talk briefly about why the need for this plan. Obviously, the targets are going to be something that takes some time to reach. So that's one reason to put together a plan and a strategy to try to accomplish them. It requires coordination of efforts across jurisdictions to address an issue really that affects more than our community's health, but also our local economy, our infrastructure, local ecosystems. And we know that these are predicted to be worsening impacts over time. As greenhouse gases increase in our worldwide atmosphere, it leads to a worsening greenhouse effect. And that will magnify or amplify these kinds of effects over time. So we know we need to work towards these targets in order to do our local part towards achieving a solution that will benefit our health, our economy, our infrastructure, and our local environment. I guess I neglected to mention that this is also in the county's strategic plan for 2019, 2020. And it's part of the comprehensive plan for Thurston County now. So we're out ahead in terms of getting that into our long-range plans in Thurston County, those same targets. And the Health Department has this plan identified as one of its strategic plan actions for this year. So this mitigation plan has set out those same targets and set some goals to accomplish these targets over time in concert with those other jurisdictions. The folks at TRPC and Partner Jurisdictions also worked on an effort to identify what some of those impacts are in more detail in the last few years. And what that arrived at was identifying that as these emissions increase in the atmosphere, we'll see some pretty substantial effects here in Western Washington, things that will have some long-range consequences for us in terms of the increased air temperature and warmer waters and warmer air, air and land. We will anticipate seeing more rain coming down in the winter months, leading to a shrinking snowpack, which is important for water supplies, not so much in the western part of Washington, but across the whole of the region. We would expect to see longer summer months of drier conditions, so that can lead to droughts. And as we've seen in very recent years, expansion of where wildfires occur in our state and the impacts from those wildfires. We would expect to see some intensification of storms in the winter months especially, with heavier precipitation at times, again mostly falling as rain. And warming waters, that's a significant impact and changes to ocean conditions as well. You'll be getting more on this when I come back to you at the Board of Health meeting to talk about the health impacts of climate change. So that is forthcoming, got rescheduled from our November Board of Health. Really quickly, wanted to distinguish a little bit between two different forms of climate action for you. The focus of that TRPC project I was just mentioning was really on understanding what the impacts that are predicted for our region are and adapting to them. So that formed a regional adaptation plan for the Thurston region. And there's a lot of overlap between that and what the subject of this current plan that we're working on is, which is mitigation. So mitigation is trying to prevent those impacts from happening by addressing the emissions that generate climate change. And as you can see, there are some actions here shown for adaptation that overlap with those for mitigation. Some examples of that being energy systems that don't rely on long supply chains. So local production of clean energy would be an example. And then having a compact community that doesn't require as much travel by motor vehicle around prevents or avoids kind of having to rely on those forms of transportation that could be easily disrupted by increased storm activity in the winter months. And then there are some other examples there of things in that sweet spot in the middle that are overlaps between what we would do to adapt climate change and what we would do to mitigate climate change. This presentation is really about the mitigation plan, which is that left-hand side of the slide. And we're trying to reduce those emissions. And so I'm going to, from here, turn things over to Allison to talk a little bit more about what's in this plan and how it was put together. Over to you, Allison.
Great, thanks, Chris. So we are at a place right now with this planning effort that after about almost two years of work, a lot of work with the community, we have a draft that's been put together. And it includes all of the different pieces that went into developing the plan. Go ahead to the next slide. And at the start of this planning process, the Steering Committee, which was made up of elected officials from the four partner jurisdictions, Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater, adopted this vision for the planning effort. And part of what they wanted to highlight in the vision to guide the work that we did is acknowledging the threat of climate change to our region. And that it, I think as Chris mentioned, affects us in numerous ways, including our economy, public health, state public safety, and the environment. And there was a need expressed by that group to work urgently on this issue and to really find solutions that our region can work on going forward to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. There was a real, we've had a lot of input from youth throughout this process who have expressed their concerns, their deep concerns with how climate change might affect their futures. And there's been a real acknowledgement through this process of the need to plan for those future generations. Go ahead, next slide. Part of what we started with is understanding, in order to develop a climate mitigation plan, we had to understand what, how are we contributing to the problem now? Climate change is caused by emitting greenhouse gas emissions like carbon dioxide and methane. And we use a greenhouse gas inventory that's developed by the Thurston Climate Action Team, which is a local nonprofit group that uses a standard protocol. It's used by many communities around the city, around the country, excuse me, to identify sources of greenhouse gas emissions. And it breaks those down by sector. So in the latest inventory that we have, you can see the pie chart here. Our largest source of emissions in Thurston County is from the energy we use to light and heat our buildings. So we call that buildings and energy. It's mostly currently comes from electricity use, because in Thurston County, we get our electricity from Puget Sound Energy. And a good portion of Puget Sound Energy's source of fuel for the electricity they provide currently is from coal and natural gas, which are two fossil fuels that contribute greenhouse gas emissions. So that makes up about 60% of our emissions right now. Every time we're turning the lights on, heating our homes, that's a big piece of the puzzle. The second biggest piece, about a third of our emissions, come from transportation. And that mostly comes from people driving in gas-powered cars, gasoline being another source of fossil fuels. We also have smaller sources of emissions that we contribute locally, from agriculture, from wastewater, from waste in general, and from other smaller sources. But those are really pretty small pieces of the pie right now, our two biggest sources. And so the focus of the work we're doing in the plan was started out being around energy use in buildings and transportation. Go ahead, next slide. As Chris mentioned at the start of this process, Thurston County and all the other partner jurisdictions adopted shared targets for reducing emissions. And these are based on guidance we have internationally for how much we need to reduce emissions in order to maintain a stable climate. And you can see here, it's a pretty big reduction. The line that's kind of going up and down at the start of this chart is our annual emissions that have been measured. They've been going up. And then you can see those targets to reduce emissions 45% from our levels, what they were in 2015, to reduce them 45% by 2030 and 85% by 2050. And our question that we had at the start of this process was really, is that possible? Can we do this? It's a pretty big change. So that's really where we started. Next slide. And in addition to, I mean, our main goal as part of this process was to identify ways that we could reduce our local contributions to greenhouse gas emissions. But it was also a concern from the beginning that we find ways to do that that also support other community goals that we have. So we also have adopted regional goals that were drawn from the Sustainable Thurston Planning Process from a few years ago. Emphasize other things that we want to achieve while we are also addressing climate change. So those are things like creating a robust economy, improving air quality, protecting sensitive lands and working lands, creating vibrant urban centers and neighborhoods, and supporting local food. These are all some of the co-benefits we were looking to achieve with this plan. Next slide. We did a lot of community engagement as part of this planning effort. We tried a lot of different things to get out in the community. We were out, one of the pictures you see there are one of the booths we had at Thurston County Fair, not last summer, but the summer before. And we just had community events. We had online surveys, we did presentations to community groups, we did targeted interviews with certain groups who aren't always well represented in these processes. And then our goal really was to get range, input from a broad range of people across the community. And we had a lot of public engagement throughout this process. We had a lot of people who were really passionate about what we were doing and wanted to get involved. And when we had the draft plan, we had a public comment period that ran from mid-September to mid-October. And we had to shift a lot of our planning for that work to an online platform. So we had an online open house instead of an in-person open house. And we had some virtual community meetings, all of which were really well attended. Next slide. So altogether, this planning process has been about a year and a half. It'll probably be about two years when all's said and done. Had a lot of opportunities throughout the process for people to get involved. And what we're looking for going from here is to move into implementation with each of the jurisdictions, taking it and incorporating it into your own efforts. And I think I'm handing it back to Chris after this one.
Yep, thank you, Allison. So what we ended up with in terms of a plan is really kind of better called a strategic framework for the continued collaboration of the partners in this climate mitigation effort into the future. And so we'll come back to this slide, it has a lot of detail on it. But I just wanted to point out that what we arrived at was a number of different strategies. And it's really important that these strategies be what kind of carry forward into the future. And there's a mix of actions that go with each one of these strategic areas. So the planning process kind of ended on wanting to make sure we stayed focused on these key areas, because they correspond to the emissions that we do generate here in Thurston County. And these are the sort of groupings that help us think about how we can implement changes that will bring down emissions in each of these areas. So the big one is, of course, making sure that the electricity that comes into Thurston County is as clean as it can be, which is trying to transition it from being generated by coal and burning of other fossil fuels and towards other power sources, making our homes and businesses much more energy efficient and making it easier for people to install their own renewable energy generation here in Thurston County. Examples being solar power or wind power of those green or cleaner energy sources. And then on down a list that really speaks to those main sources, transportation, the way we use energy in our homes and businesses. One big area that we identified in this process that wasn't really on the radar screen when we started the plan was storing carbon, so this is otherwise known as sequestration. And this really came out of the community comments to be added to the plan, was acknowledging that our forest lands and agricultural lands have a big role to play in capturing some of the carbon that we generate here in Thurston County. And we heard loud and clear from the community that they wanted that included in this mitigation plan. Even though it's not technically about reducing emissions, it is about reducing our net emissions through that effort to store carbon. And I guess the other thing to point out here is that there's a theme of equity that runs through this in the discussions with the community and how the plan is put together. And that is something that we know needs to be addressed even more as the plan moves into implementation. So, and then the final category there, kind of building capacity and resilience, is some of the things that need to be done to make sure that we stay on track. But a big one here, it's kind of a cross-cutting effort that you'll hear more about, is that continued engagement of the partner jurisdictions so that we have a more effective voice toward advocating and really moving forward some policy changes at other levels of government.
Hey, Chris, before you move on, can you tell me a little bit more about storing carbons and sequestration?
Sure, so this is the idea that, and it's well demonstrated, that plants store carbon by breathing in carbon dioxide and using that to grow new plant material, whether that's crops that we're growing, trees that are growing in our communities, forest lands. And it can include also marine environments. So estuaries and the like are known to store a lot of carbon, even though that's not really been explored fully by this plan. It's things that are in that vein of trying to pull the carbon out of the atmosphere and store it in the soil and in plant matter. And that can be a very effective way to reduce the net carbon that's coming from our communities.
All right, thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since you brought that topic up, can I ask whether or not I, within this sub-bullet or whatever you're calling it, forestry practices, it's not called out specifically, but was that, is that one of the sub-strategies? Or was that discussed by the group potentially working on, you know, forestry practices? We're working on that issue with respect to water issues, but I could see how it could also be effective here potentially.
Yeah, I would...
Chris, if you want, I could jump in on that and say, yes, that question of forestry practices, particularly the length of timing for harvest is something that's been discussed. And we also looked at, there's examples not far in a region in Lewis County, and then there's a carbon sequestration forestry project that's underway. There's another one in Pierce County that the Niskali Community Forest has done some carbon sequestration work with. So that definitely was on our mind. And there are local nearby examples that we could learn from and potentially apply in our county.
So I want to kind of run through these next few slides in higher speed, because I know we want to leave some time for further discussion. That list of actions that came out of the discussions by the work groups that TRPC pulled together on this project, as well as the discussions of the Steering Committee, had to be kind of evaluated and assessed for how well they would help us meet our priorities and our targets here in Thurston County. So the Steering Committee developed some prioritization criteria that they applied to this list of actions. And that included, how well does it... And that included, how well does it actually reduce the emissions that contribute to climate change? How quickly can the action actually be implemented? Is it something that we have local control over that we can, can actually do and enact? And are there co-benefits? That, that would be that reference to other objectives that taking a particular action would help us with, including adaptation among those co-benefits. But it, it could be economic, it could be social benefits. So a variety of co-benefits were included in the analysis. So these were the lenses that were used to do an initial qualitative evaluation of the actions that were being thought of in the community. And then we went beyond that to narrow the list of actions to look at how, what quantitatively would they do to reduce our emissions? And what, what this graph shows is that sort of pie of where emissions are coming from in the different sectors. And the actions, and we'll run through these fairly quickly, that we can take, how much of the pie will they help us to reduce? So in the case of greening our grid, that's trying to convert to more renewable and, and clean energy sources that don't emit carbon emissions, that gets a fairly substantial chunk taken out of that pie of emissions. So right there, you've almost gotten halfway to the target by, by working on that power supply. And we are very fortunate to have a state that is taking proactive measures on this and passed the Clean Energy Transformation Act in twenty nineteen. And that is a big part of the, how we accomplish this particular action is state policy. Working on energy efficiency at the local level, trying to change how, what fuels our home heating and lighting, and, and doing conservation measures and converting to electricity instead of natural gas in construction. That is all this reduce and shift building energy. And some of that is also derived from state policy changes of the building code. But it also is, is several actions that we can take here at the local level. And so that gets us another chunk of our path towards those targets. Another big piece of the pie is pulled out. So now we're over halfway there. Transportation is another big sector. That's another third roughly of our emissions, more than that actually. When we try to reduce our vehicle miles traveled, that reduces the amount of energy we're consuming through transportation. When we make it possible for people to travel by other forms of transportation than automobiles that burn gasoline or diesel fuel, we're, we're cutting those emissions from transportation. So, and, and a big part of this too is the land use that supports that transformation of our transportation system. And that is a lot of local action. There is some state policy that can be helpful with that. But land use and decisions about how we plan things for our communities has a big impact on our transportation choices and can go a long way towards meeting that goal. Another chunk is our solid waste. That's about four percent of our emissions in Thurston County, from Thurston County. So actions to reduce waste, reduce the transportation of that waste out of our community to, to a landfill can have a big impact on those emissions and get us another chunk of that pie. And then finally, if we are able to take other actions, improving the efficiency of our water and wastewater pumping and, and, and movement of, of water, that can help to reduce our use of electricity locally. Working on other forms of, of energy efficiency. And of course, that big one of storing carbon gets us the remainder of the way towards that hundred percent, towards our targets. So this next slide is a little bit of a different view of that same pie of emissions that we need to reduce. This is called a wedge analysis. What, what this planning project did was basically take those actions that were identified in the community, after having run them through the assessment and evaluation, how, how much does it take to get to those targets? Which actions are going to get us there? And can we actually get to that lower right target of eighty-five percent below twenty fifteen levels by the year twenty fifty? So this is a similar graph to what Allison showed, but with a little bit more information on it. The, the left-hand side, the dark line is our known and measured current emissions from twenty ten to twenty eighteen. So that jagged black line. And then when we project that out in the future based on just the trend that is there from twenty ten to twenty eighteen, that's that business as usual line at the top. So that's if we didn't make any changes, didn't take any of these actions, that's where our emissions would end up. And it's, as you can see, going in the wrong direction. The trends are not our friends. Although if you add it in twenty twenty, I think we'd see that bending down just because of the impacts of COVID nineteen. But in, in the long run, we're expecting that that's where we would be if we didn't take proactive measures to reduce our emissions. So the colored wedges that you see here are, are the different sectors and, and how much can be reduced in each one. So you can see that state policies are a very substantial chunk towards that, both the twenty fifty, twenty thirty and twenty fifty targets, which is that lower dotted line. That's where we want to get to. And those two circles are the year, the year specified targets for our emissions levels. So we're trying to get down to there and state policy, the Clean Energy Transformation Act and, and other measures of building code, calling for more energy efficiency in new construction, that gets us a long ways towards those goals. And those are largely already enacted. There's obviously some additional state policies that would be helpful, particularly in the area of transportation, clean fuels and the like. And that would help on our transportation emissions. But largely that remaining chunk is actions that we need to take locally or policies that we need to work on in our own communities to get us down to that, those target levels. And the cross-hatched portion is kind of what came in as a saving grace from community suggestions and ideas, which is that storing of carbon, the sequestration does get us to our target if we, if we are taking very aggressive action to, to try to store carbon. So that becomes a really important piece of this overall picture of emissions reductions. So back to that mitigation framework, these are the strategy areas that we know we need to make progress in. It's, the scenario that was run to generate that wedge graph does get us to our targets. But it is going to take action across each of these strategy areas. And each one of these strategy areas is multiple actions. So you can see the strategies listed there. And what it, what it says is, there's a lot of work to be done across a whole host of different areas of community life. Some of this is local action, the, the local government action that needs to happen. Some of it is state policy that needs to happen. Some of it is people changing how they live, living, that living lighter goal. We can, we can create the supports that, that lead people to do that more. But ultimately, our residents have to make choices that do help us along the way towards our goals. If we believe in these as our community's goals, then, then we need to work together, not just within local governments, but among members of the community, very broadly, multiple sectors. So I want to bring us back to some next steps for this climate mitigation plan and, and moving into its implementation. The immediate next step is really to, for the steering committee of the project, which I already mentioned, Commissioner Edwards is the, the lead representative from the county commission. And I've been there as staff person from Thurston County. That steering committee will meet on December tenth at twelve noon. That's the next meeting. And they've already looked at the public comments that came in from September to October and have made some suggestions for a revision to the draft plan. And I think that has just now been wrapped up and is, is awaiting review by the staff members from the different jurisdictions right now to have that ready to go out to the steering committee in advance of that December tenth meeting. It is a really solid plan. I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it. It, it contains the seventy or so assessed actions and those different strategy groupings. And now we hope that that will result in the, the approval of the steering committee, which really is, is what puts that plan in place. From there, there's really discussion needed on how to move forward into implementation. And I know we're pretty late in the game for twenty twenty-one in terms of funding, but I know you've had some, some discussions about how, how to create some, some allocations for climate mitigation next year. I'm very grateful to that. We will also need to have some further discussions with some departments within the county that have a, a strong role to play in implementation. I've started to do that. There's more discussion needed. But some of these actions are ones that align well with things that the county is already working on. An example of that being energy efficiency within buildings. Another being the food waste reduction efforts of Public Works. And, and work that's been done to improve the efficiency of our transportation system. And there's efforts within Thurston Drives, for example, to work on housing energy efficiency. And so those are all examples of things that are ongoing efforts that we'll want to continue and hopefully intensify in the coming years. But getting to that more specific level of, of how we implement this and program is, is a discussion with not only the board in terms of where you want resources to go in the county, but also with the other departments. And I'll be doing more of that in the coming weeks. And then we hope that within a month or so of the steering committee passing the final plan, we'll be coming back to the board for its acceptance of that plan and further consideration of, of phase three implementation, which starts with a decision on whether to continue the collaboration with the cities. And I included in your packet a draft inter-local agreement that is modeled after the phase one and phase two inter-local agreements that led to the setting of the targets and the completion of this plan. Thank, thank you for the alternate commissioner on the steering committee, Ty Mensah, for working with the cities to help put that draft inter-local agreement together. That is what we will want to take a look at and see if the county wants to continue that collaboration with the, with the local cities. And we move into trying to put that implementation into place. It will require some additional allocation of resources and, and the efforts continuing of the partners in this to decide on what actions are needed right now and, and monitor our progress towards those targets. So this is just an outline of what's in the inter-local agreement. You have a draft of that in your packet and we can pop that up on the screen if you'd like. But that, that will be a topic for a, a future either board briefing or agenda setting discussion to look over that inter-local agreement and see if that's something that the board is ready to, to enter into. So I would expect that that would probably be coming back to you again within a month or so of the plan being finalized by the steering committee. So in conclusion, this is a, a really important and ongoing effort. I'm really honored to have been a part of putting together this plan. It's going to take action by a lot of people in our community and, and the concerted effort of Thurston County to, to, to get this to a place where we know we're on track to meet those targets that we've agreed on as a community. So with that, I'll open things up to your questions and any discussion that you'd like to have now. And hopefully we can keep this moving.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Allison. Before we get to the questions, I just want to say the, and Romero, I'm sure. You're looking for some type of direction from the board, option one, two, or three, before the next steering committee on December tenth, the TCMP Steering Committee. So I don't know if Commissioner Edwards has that, but they're looking for direction on the options in which to go. So let's open up for questions. No, start with Gary. Go with Gary.
Okay, am I on?
You're on.
Say, where are the other jurisdictions as far as their commitment to this? We were earlier in a budget process. They were not quite there yet. Where are we at now on that?
I'll take an answer for that. Yeah, we actually have been going around and doing a lot of updates to the, all of the different policymaking bodies. So we had a briefing with the city of Tomwater last night, did one with the city of Olympia last week. We had one with the city of Lacey. It was a little bit earlier in the process, before the public comment period. But all the staff are doing just what Chris has done with you and kind of sharing for the folks like yourself have been on the steering committee and following it all the way through. You just touch base with everyone before the steering committee takes action. And I think we've got pretty good support across all the jurisdictions. Everyone's in a different place right now. I think that are thinking a lot about what happens next year, what happens in implementations. There's been a lot of good discussions about that phase three agreement. What I can tell you is that the city of Olympia has committed in their budget. They've funded a new climate manager position. And I believe they've just gone through the interview process for, so they'll have, they have staff that'll be dedicated to working on climate issues and using the climate mitigation plan, organize their work at the city. The city of Tomwater has done the same, I believe they have in their budget, a dedicated climate position of some kind. It might be a partial because I know they did a little bit of a, they're doing a reorganization over there of some of their sustainability work. City of Lacey, you haven't touched base with is where their discussion is right now. But I know they have support for continuing to work on this effort. They've done a lot internally already and are looking for ways that they would be incorporating it into their comprehensive planning process. And that's, I think, where everyone is at the moment.
I, I guess, looking for that, I guess there's going to be, each one of those issues takes, takes financial commitment. I recognize that. But sometime back, we were running into difficulty. We had offered to put up resources. And then I think we put a contingency on it if they did likewise. So did that all happen?
Commissioner is talking about the clean energy proposal TCAT came to us with. It's really, it connected to, but different from the climate mitigation plan. They came with a proposal and they wanted each jurisdiction to commit thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. We did that. The other jurisdictions didn't. So they were one, they came back and said, will you, will you let us use your committed money for maybe a scoping project and get a consultant? And this is kind of, I think it would dovetail with the climate mitigation plan, but it was really a separate ask. That was part of it was developing clean energy conversion strategies. And it was also positioning ourselves for any federal cares or, or economic kind of investment money à la two thousand and eight, when all the money was, was pumped into the economy to help in great recession. So anyway, I think that's what Commissioner Edwards is talking about, since I see blank looks on Chris and Allison's faces.
Was I, I, I think I'm, I know about that proposal. It was kind of moving forward a little bit outside the climate mitigation planning process. It does support, as you heard, one of our major takeaways from this effort. One of the things that we can work on in the short term to reduce emissions is to increase energy efficiency in our building stock. And early in the pandemic, when we weren't sure what kind of funding might be going Um, and early in the pandemic, when we weren't sure what kind of funding might be going, coming our way. I know I talked with uh, Jenica about some ideas and we also talked with some of our stakeholders in the um, from TCAT and the Northwest Eco Building Guild about ideas they had to try and see what are some not really, not necessarily shovel-ready, but what are some things that would move forward that would support economic development um, and climate action? And a, a big area for that might be, how can we um, get more energy efficiency retrofits happening in our community? A lot of the building stock that we have today, we're going to have it going forward. It could be more efficient. That's really low hanging fruit and it also puts people to work in our community. So um, I know the concerns from the cities at the time was that they weren't, we hadn't finished the plan. It hadn't gone out for public comment. They weren't sure what kind of framework we might have for collaboration uh, in the coming year. Um, and they wanted some way to be able to discuss proposals like that as a group. Um, and I, I, that's my understanding of where, where that is, not necessarily that they didn't support that proposal, but we're kind of not sure how it fit in the overall picture. Um, and that's not something that I'm tracking. I do really, we really support that there's a lot of, we have a lot of great partners in the community who are already looking at ways to move forward with the actions in the plan, um, even before it's been finalized. And that is fantastic, because this is an urgent problem to address.
Uh, and then, and a, a follow-up to that. Ty laid that out perfectly. I mean, because that's, that's the way it all developed. I was just looking at it from a barometer, if you will, about what the other jurisdictions were willing to commit to as they move forward. So uh, that's how that all ties together. Uh, I do have one question on the financial impact on your briefing paper. You've got something on here that, that ends and uh, it's going to entail an additional thirty-seven dollar commitment. I thought I'd make that out of pocket if that's uh, all it was. I hate to have the
Thirty-seven thousand.
Hate to have the counting to all that work. Sorry, that, that's no doubt a typo on my part.
Yeah, okay. So what was that? I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure there's a dollar amount that's going to exceed thirty-seven. So what was that?
Yeah, thirty-seven thousand. That's for uh, phase three as I assume, yeah, participation.
Sorry, yes. Uh, so phase three is actually, I think thirty, around thirty-four thousand five hundred is anticipated to be each jurisdiction's uh, contribution towards uh, the start of phase three, which would be in twenty twenty-one. And um, so that is uh, if, if each jurisdiction came in with an equal share, uh, like, like they did in phase two. So it would be thirty-four thousand, a little over thirty-four thousand.
I guess that's what I'm wondering, did uh, is that commitment there? Everybody's going to chip in again, because I, I do think we've got that subside in our budget, I think. Uh, was that part of your deal, Ty, where didn't you uh, address that?
Yeah, so I can help with that, answer to that question. So the, if, so I was helping to develop what the phase three agreement would look like, as Chris said. And just as a, as a warning, the document that we've been given, there, there's two pieces of it. One is the, is, is the actual inter-local agreement. We haven't really dealt with that. But, so that hasn't changed to my knowledge, but the second document is a scope of work that would be involved in TRPC. And we've been working on that. We made some significant changes on Monday. So the draft that has been given to the commissioner is not the latest and greatest. Um, and I'm waiting for a clean copy from Mark Daly at TRPC on that, but um, but yeah, so the, the, the projected cost for each jurisdiction, I believe, is it's something like what you guys were saying, thirty-five thousand dollars, let's just say, for each jurisdiction. That is uh, each jurisdiction would commit, and it sounds like, and I can, to kind of answer Commissioner Edwards' question, um, because I'm in those discussions with council members. Olympia and Tomwater think that that's, I think they're pretty solid on that. Lacey, uh, council members, there's two on that subcommittee, um, are certainly supportive. Um, they're, you know, they're not a hundred percent uh, guaranteed from their council. They've got to discuss it with their council. Um, and that would encompass a implementation plan. Phase three is about implementation. It's not necessarily paying for every action that the jurisdiction might have to take. But it, it is um, developing the implementation strategies, monitoring them, setting, kind of setting the course and uh, and guiding, the, guiding the framework. Like as Chris said, we've got a strategic framework. There's going to be some like translating of that framework into actual policies and then the jurisdictions have to take action. Um, so it's, so it's, it's a concrete number that, that uh, that will be the next phase of implementation. I wouldn't see it as an absolute total cost of, of uh, you know, to the jurisdiction of, of what the total implementation of the strategies is going to involve. That's, that's more along the lines of, you know, TCAT, I think, and I was going to ask you guys about this, but TCAT tried to ballpark it for the jurisdictions and say, we've gone through the list of strategies and we've tried to earmark the ones that would take jurisdictional effort. And we've come up with, you know, one point two million dollars, I think is what they came up with, worth of, of jurisdictional actions. Um, and um, divided between four jurisdictions. So I, but, so that's, you know, that's a different number. That's a different calculation um, than what the phase three agreement involves. So that's where that thirty, that thirty-five thousand is about putting into, putting into place the structure for the implementation of the, of the strategies.
Thank, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Mensah.
Do you have any questions, Ty? Go, go ahead for that. I want to take you up. We only have about four minutes left.
Um, well, I, I, my, 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 my list of questions was in and around what I was just talking about. I, I wanted to make sure everybody knew there was some revisions to the scope of work that was handed out. I wanted to, I kind of wanted to ask Chris and Allison, I've had, you know, I actually subbed in for Commissioner Edwards at the beginning and I was involved in the, selecting the criteria for the filters uh, of how the things would be prioritized. Then I was out of it while the actual strategies were being vetted and assembled. And now I'm in it again on the, on the phase three. But I don't have as, I don't have as good of an understanding uh, a, as I'd like about the, the strategy list and how comprehensive it is and how many of them we need to do, you know, to get to our goals. So I guess I'm wondering what you guys think of that number that I think TCAT laid out, where they tried to come in and say, because I think Commissioner Edwards and I are in the same position of saying, hey, we want to do this, but we need to kind of know what the financial impact is and what the, how much money should we be budgeting? We earmarked, I, I argued for three hundred thousand dollars worth of earmarking, totally unspecified. And that was totally based on TCAT saying, we've added up one point two million dollars worth of, of actions. Thurston County's been paying for twenty-five percent of stuff, so that's three hundred thousand would be our commitment. And again, I know that's total ballpark. And that includes phase three, in my mind, in, in my, in my way of thinking, that included our commitment to phase three implementation. It included our staffing commitment that's included in phase three, which I think is a point five or point two-five. Can't remember what we all So yeah, it includes all of that plus develop, plus staff time to develop, you know, policies, like you're saying, well, we need more building retrofits. Okay, well, yeah, okay. Well, how do we do that? What does Thurston County have to do to make more building retrofits happen? Obviously, there's going to have to be work in developing, you know, maybe code changes or, or, or things that, or, 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 or an incentive program, you know, uh, that we or a, you know, a grant program. I don't know what it looks like exactly. But I want to make sure we have the resources to do those things. So anyway, I guess my question is, how does that look to you guys? You, you, you're more familiar with the details of the strategies. Is three hundred thousand dollars of committed money from Thurston County get us in the ballpark of being able to do a robust implementation?
You'll have to give us
Or is that really short?
You'll have to have a thirty-second answer, because we need to wrap it up and give you direction.
Right. Well, so I guess the, one thing I want to quickly say is that uh, the direction that we're looking for here is, do you want to support continuation into a decision at that uh, steering committee meeting on December tenth? Uh, that, that is kind of the status quo, um, that, that we proceed that way, um, in support of the, the plan. Um, and then it's a follow-on question whether you're uh, interested in uh, at least considering the phase three proposal for continued collaboration with the city. So that's, that's kind of the action that I'm looking for, some indication from the commission about. Um, and in terms of the dollar amount, I, I think we haven't really gone there yet uh, in, among the project planning team to understand what the full costs of implementation of this would be. Um, that's a level of planning or, or sort of figuring out the implementation that I think is, is the project of twenty twenty-one to do. Um, to really get a good, more solid handle on what the costs are of some of the highest priority actions.
Wrap it up, Chris. Wrap it up.
So uh, going, going back to, uh, if I may, another press for time for, for the options. Um, with all due respect, uh, we, we already are in, in option number one. That's the direction the board has provided in the past. We already are uh, uh, supporting the completion of the, of the plan. We already are considering phase three as Commissioner Mensah is part of the development of scope of work. So with all due respect, I don't know what type of action do you need today from the board.
Just confirmation of that.
So we, we already are on phase, on, on, on option one. So I don't think the other options are applicable.
I, I agree with that, because we're already there, it seems. The other two don't seem very much applicable. So there's, there's confirmation for me. I don't know, uh, Gary, what do you, are you open for option number one? You, you there?
Do, do you really need to help?
I'm there. I'm
I'm sorry, but do, do you really need to exercise a vote on a, on an option you already are implementing?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, but
So nothing's going to be wavering. Nothing's changed that.
So I, I think it's a good update. I think in terms of what is coming up. Um, but with all due respect, I, 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 I don't think you need to revote again on, on something you have already started working on it.
Okay, then. There's your affirmation. Continue on. Well, I thank you all for participating. We're just afternoon and I have a noon EDC to get into.
Thank you all so much. It was um, it's been great to see the leadership from the county and from the participation from the staff on this project, and we really appreciate it.
It's good to see you, Allison.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Chris.
Good Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Jenica.
You all as well. Bye-bye.